Alex, how are you?
Good, Dr. Schreik, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so I'm not seeing the option to record in the interpretation room. I don't know if this account has that option. Alexandra, what are your thoughts? I don't know if we put that on the agenda.
So what do you mean, which account Jensen, like the way I joined or?
Yeah, so I can, I can put you in the interpretation room and typically when I do that because we are using the city account, not the the district account. When I do that, I go into the room with you with a separate account and I record it. But I don't, it doesn't look like I have that function. So you can interpret tonight, but we won't record it, Steve. Is that? I mean, it's, we're gonna have to make do, maybe?
Yeah, this, the school account is used, being used.
Yeah, I have to open up one of the school sessions at 6:45 for Scarlett tonight.
Oh, that's right. Okay, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the link is this one, so.
Yeah, I think as long as we have interpretation available during this meeting, which can still happen, right?
Yeah, yep, I can still open the room and everything. I just can't record that session.
Yeah, I think that's important that anybody who wants to watch it has access tonight.
Okay, okay.
If there were requests for a translated or interpreted version, could we do that after the fact?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, Alexandra, I mean, we could, Alex, you could provide, you could just do interpretation after somebody requested it.
Yes, and we can translate the transcripts if you save those Jensen, right?
Yep, so they'll all be saved on the, on the city Zoom account and I'll just have probably Dominic just email them over to me tomorrow so I can upload the recording and I can send you whatever you might need.
Yeah.
Great. All right.
We might want to note that with the city that their account doesn't have, you know, have that feature.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they use it, to be honest, because there was, it wasn't enabled this morning. But yeah, for the future, they might want to know.
Okay, thanks, Jensen. Thank you, Alex.
No problem. Alexandra, I'm gonna put you in there now.
Hi, everybody. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Jensen, we gotta move the mayor up. She's in the, I think she's in the audience. There we go.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for making me a panelist, Jensen. I was just having a tough time finding the link.
No worries.
Okay, looks like, I'm counting heads, one, two, three, four, five. Are we just missing Manny, guys? Looks like it. Why don't we go ahead and call our special committee of the whole meeting together? I think we only have one item on the agenda this afternoon, this evening, and just thought I would flag that I know that we've, we've got a little bit of a time constraint. I know several of us do in terms of a hard stop at just a little bit before seven. So I'll go ahead and call our committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:02 PM and do a quick, okay, we've got everybody here. It's gonna say a quick call of the role. But if we could, just in calling the meeting to order, Jensen, if we could acknowledge that we have school committee member Dr. Kristen Pangalo, Mary Manning, Jim Fleming, Ms. Campbell, Amanda Cruz, and Beth Ann Cornell, myself, all present. So we've got all seven members and accounted for. Also joining us is our superintendent, Dr. Raven, Dr. Reich, our assistant superintendent, Kate Carboni. We also have Chelsea Banks, who I saw earlier, I think, on this call. Yep, there you are, right in front of me. And we're joined by some invited guests. Anna Martell from Salem Public Schools, a psychologist, also a Salem State College adjunct professor. Thank you for joining us. Dr. Sarah Moore, an associate professor at Salem State and a member of Salem's Board of Health. Appreciate you being here and all the work you're doing throughout this entire pandemic. Dr. Cloveen Campbell, who we've been fortunate, do I see Cloveen here? I know Dr. Campbell has been a part of our health cohort within our schools as we're making decisions related to COVID. She's the medical director and at Pediatric Associates of Greater Salem and EBD and the Salem, and the Salem Public School physician. And lastly, Dr. Charlene Mosky Weber, who is the Director of Nursing and Health Services for Salem Public Schools. Just want to make sure, are Charlene and Dr. Campbell here?
Dr. Campbell was here. And then I don't see her now. She was there. And I don't see Dr. Weber. I, she was gonna be off screen, but I'll check with her. But Dr. Campbell was here. Somehow she dropped off.
Okay, well, we'll hope that she can jump back on. She's been an integral part of the efforts to date, working with Salem Public Schools as we think through how best to keep our students and our staff safe and give our families an opportunity to be, to have in-person learning in a way that's been working for our district throughout the last couple of years. I think the purpose of today's meeting is really to better understand what the current mask guidance is in the state. We know the state has just lifted the masking or allowed districts, I should say, to lift the masking requirements, leaving it in the hands of local officials and school committee members to better understand what direction we want to take with that based on what might be happening within your particular district or what might be happening in your community. We know here in Salem, thanks to the good work of the Board of Health, we had a mask mandate for indoor activities. We also had a vaccine requirement for indoor activities. Both of those items have been lifted, given the, you know, the positive trends we're seeing with respect to community positivity rates and case counts and most importantly, hospitalizations. That was really a key factor that that I know our Board of Health was considering when putting in place those restrictions. For purposes of this evening, I think we're trying to gather a set of information that will help us as a school committee in terms of setting a policy with respect to masks. Right now, we are wearing masks. This, DESI has allowed districts to lift those requirements as of the end of this month. I'm hoping that we can engage in a discussion that enables us to think about what kind of metrics we'd want to use and better understand what information we'll be sorting through as we make those decisions as a district. I know that in speaking with some folks individually, I haven't had a chance to talk to everybody on the school committee, but certainly for some of us, some concern about the timing of school vacation in February and what we've seen in past school vacation weeks, what's happened in terms of case counts going up when, when students and staff are out for a week and, and coming back to school thereafter. But for the purpose of today, we are hoping to get an idea of what sort of information would be helpful for school committee members. What are the key concerns or metrics that you have on your mind? And how we might want to consider what is in the best interest of Salem Public Schools going forward? At this point, I don't think there's any intention, and please, school committee members, correct me if I'm wrong, to, to change what we're doing effective February 28th. I think we do want to, we have a meeting on our 28th, our next meeting is the, is the 28th, better understand what, what metrics we do want to cite and look at in terms of looking at masking policies for Salem Public Schools. We did get some information. I just want to make sure a school committee member saw information relative to what we're doing for testing. So we have a number of schools that we, all of our schools have an opportunity for weekly testing. The highest percentages being at, you know, in the 94% range, the lowest percentages being in the 55% range in terms of the number of students getting, getting tested weekly. We also have information on vaccination rates by school. Some schools, we are seeing in the 30% range of students vaccinated, others as high as 67%. We do not have any schools that are at the 80% threshold that was originally set by the state in terms of allowing districts to lift mask mandates. We also have data that was provided in terms of surveys that went out in case counts. And I'll let school committee members review all of that information because I think we've been, we've been getting that from the superintendent. I want to thank you for gathering that and sort of sorting it all in one place. What I thought might be useful for us to start off the conversation is maybe to hear from the invited guests that we brought on as we think about policies and considerations we want to, we may want to put into play relative to masking. I think it's fair to say we, nobody wants us wearing masks forever, nor do we want to lift them in a, in an area that's just targeting in a date without necessarily tying it to some metrics and understanding how we can keep students and staff and our families safe throughout this, in the manner that we have throughout this pandemic. So perhaps, Dr. Reich, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to start us off, but I'd be happy for us to hear from our invited guests. Just a little information, if they'd like to share with us sort of their thoughts on how we should be approaching this mask, this mask policy within our district.
Sorry, Mayor, you cut out for a second. Can you just repeat the question?
I said, is there anything you'd like to add? Ideally, I'd like to hear from our invited guests. A little bit about what their thoughts might be in terms of what policy considerations we should be taking into account as we think about this masking policy going forward. And as I said earlier, I don't think anyone wants to lift it right away, nor do we think we want to be wearing masks forever. We're trying to understand how best we can keep our families, our students and our staff safe and, and also keeping in mind, you know, there are, there are, there are challenges with wearing masks as well.
Yep. So I think, you know, I think this is a nuanced conversation, obviously, and you know, that's why I think the consideration of multiple data points, which we said, you know, I sent to the committee earlier today. Chelsea certainly has a better, the best command of the data across the district and do want to thank her for providing that information. So we provided you with the vaccine rates by school. While we've seen, we have seen a significant climb over the last few months, we still, as the mayor said, have, you know, huge discrepancies, especially our elementary schools are at the lower end of vaccine rates. And we also have the testing, our testing rates, and we have about, we have 71% of our students overall who are participating in the weekly COVID checks that are happening at school. There's the, the pool testing as well as the take-home kits that we give out, and we have about 71% of students participating in that. Our case counts, you see, we provided that information. We, we saw a, obviously a major spike in January, and then that came down, has come down each week, except that we were flat over the last two weeks with the, you know, rate, what was the rate, Chelsea? I just gotta pull that up. Gotta find.
I was looking for my unmute button. So we don't do a rate as much as we just count the cases. Plateaued at 4.5 average daily cases over the last two weeks for students and 0.8 for staff. And actually, both of those numbers held to the last two weeks.
You know, and I also provided the data from the poll that we did, which asked for input from students, families and staff. I would also just point out to the mayor's comments, you know, there are, you know, we've seen after every vacation a spike in cases. That has been consistent throughout. And so it does give me pause to return from vacation without masks, given that we see the rates typically go up. I do feel strongly that our community would like to see, and you know, that this can't continue, as you said, for eternity. And I'd love to see a prospective end date with some, you know, with some, you know, metrics attached to them, as you, you mentioned. I think that's important. You know, I do have, you know, Pete, there's fatigue clearly in the community. I know students are, you know, tired of it and they're struggling to wear them consistently. And at the same time, you know, we know that the socialization for young people has been compromised during this pandemic. Masking doesn't help. But like anything, you know, I also don't want to, you know, certainly concerned about the health and wellness risks that we've worked really hard with the layers of mitigation from the start. And so I think we've got to balance those two things out, and that's why we have, you know, I'm, again, no expert. I'm glad we have people who know a lot more about this than I do with us here tonight. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, to call on some of those folks.
Appreciate that. And again, we're gonna, we're gonna need to break by seven o'clock, so I just want to be mindful of planting that seed. I don't think we're anticipating making any rushed decisions this evening, but definitely want to make sure we're hearing from folks who bring some good, good opportunity for us to hear different perspectives. Dr. Campbell, you've been with us on this journey throughout this pandemic within Salem Public Schools and appreciate all of the time that you've given to us to help us think through these issues. Would love if you would mind sharing with us to sort of any, any thoughts, perspective, metrics that you think are important as we think about lifting mask requirements for Salem Public Schools.
So, so I, I would like to, to first of all, say that the lifting of the mask mandate does not mean that everyone needs to take their mask off. It simply means that masks are optional and not mandated by the state. I really think that lost in the discussion sometimes is an implication that the governor's commanding all of us to remove our masks. And I think that we just need to be mindful that it's really, it's really masks are optional. So children and adults who choose to continue to wear masks shouldn't be shamed because they're wearing their masks. And those who choose not to wear a mask also shouldn't be shamed. And I think honestly, it's a, it's a reasonable off-ramping into some sense of normalcy. I am not hard and fast on the 28th date that the governor has set for lifting the mandate because I think Dr. Reich is absolutely correct that after every single holiday, there's a spike. And although we've seen the rates dramatically drop, we want to be mindful of that. And I think it's a reasonable goal to project to at least investigate lifting our school's mask mandate two weeks after the school vacation, when we can be certain that we have a command of some data with regards to not having significantly elevated levels of, of cases. And I think it, it provides a hopeful set point for everyone to believe that we're, we're, we're heading in that direction where masks are optional and, and there's something to look forward to.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campbell. Appreciate that. Could I ask perhaps Sarah Moore, a member of the Board of Health, would you mind sort of giving some context as well for your thoughts with respect to how we, what we might want to consider as we think about this policy going forward?
Sure. So just so folks are aware, I'm not necessarily speaking on behalf of the Board of Health. This isn't something that we have discussed as a group. But I am an associate professor in the sociology department at Salem State. So I'm a trained sociologist with a specialization in medical sociology. And I'm also a Salem Public Schools parent. I have a fifth grader at Horace Mann. So, you know, this is definitely something that is on my mind in, at multiple levels. So I think there are a couple of things that sort of come to mind when I think about this. So I, I completely understand the wanting of some sort of plan for, for an off-ramp, right? Like, we've been hearing a lot of this, like, off-ramp language. And as Superintendent Reich said, there's a lot of fatigue happening in the community, and I think that's absolutely understandable. And I think that there, you all have a decision that's not a black or white decision ahead of you, right? So there are a lot of gray areas here. We could talk about one-way masking, in which case I think is a matter of equity. When we talk about one-way masking, we might also think about whether or not we're able to provide high-quality masks to all of our students who want to use them so that they're not using cloth masks. Again, as a matter of equity, especially because in this case, the district is changing the, the conditions under which this masking, this lack of masking is happening. So I think it's important to, you know, consider that. And I would just echo that I think it's really important to have really clear metrics. And I think, you know, as Mayor Driscoll said, when the Board of Health made our decision to rescind the mask and the vaccination mandate last week, we did so on the base of a set of metrics, primarily around hospitalization, hospital capacity and ICU capacity. The one thing I do want to highlight, though, is that schools are different from like restaurants and gyms, right? People have the option of going to those places. Students are required to be in school. So I think it's important, I've heard a little bit of rumbling about, well, the Board of Health has rescinded the mask mandate and has rescinded the vaccination mandate, then we're good to go. And so I just, I wouldn't, I would think about that in a more nuanced way because public schools are obviously very different spaces. Another thing, you know, I think I have seen the most recent data around the vaccination rates in schools, and it is really concerning for a school to have a vaccination rate in the 30%, right? And that's not even accounting for boosters, which is, I think we know is really important. And so I think it feels, it feels like a really difficult decision, right? Making, making this decision that could potentially affect folks in a lot of different ways and could disproportionately affect our, our students of color. And as, you know, I think I made this argument when the Board of Health was deliberating the vaccine mandate, that, you know, because we know that our Black and Latinx, Latinx in particular, community, you know, is a lower rate of vaccination in that community. And we also know that they are more likely to get sick with COVID, have more severe symptoms and die. I also think that doing whatever we can to mitigate transmission for, you know, in whatever ways are reasonable, I think, I think that is an important sort of piece when it comes to ensuring equity in the community. That said, I, I again, understand that folks are really anxious to be rid of the masks. I know there's a mental health argument to be made, and that was the other point that I wanted to make really quickly. You know, I have not aware of any studies that actually isolate masks as a causal factor for the anxiety or the depression or unhappiness that our students are facing. I think there's a lot more that goes into that. And so I do want us to be mindful that if we assume that removing the masks is gonna repair our community, I think that is something to really, really be thinking about, right? And, and we really need to think about investing in, you know, mental health services, community resources, those sorts of things. So again, I think, I think this is a complicated argument. I know that if, me personally, if we lift the mask mandate, I will expect my daughter to continue masking at school for the time being. I don't think that that has to be forever, but I certainly would love to see our vaccination rates higher, and I would feel a lot better sending her to school if these rates were higher, coupled with, you know, fewer case counts in the community. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Sarah. That's actually a really good segue to Ms. Martell, who has joined us, who's working in our district as a school psychologist, to share perspectives on both what she's seeing on the ground and thoughts that we can also better understand the perspective of what she might bring to the table here for this, this discussion.
I mean, I, I will echo what Sarah said, that there's no data yet about, so I, I don't have numbers to say. I know that there are much higher rates of depression and anxiety, and we are seeing more and more referrals to the special ed process for emotional issues. So it's hard to say if masks are a part of that, but I will say that what I have noticed is I think it can be very hard for students who are at risk. So they may have some emotional struggles. Also, students who have, who are hard of hearing, but the, especially the, the children and students, adolescents who are at risk, I find it's, they have a much harder time reading body language and facial expressions with, with masks on. And I have a lot of teachers that will talk to me and will sort of say, look, I can, I'm happy right now. So I think that there's no data, but I think it will benefit students ultimately when masks are removed, from a social-emotional perspective. My other concern is that some students are actually really enjoying wearing masks because it allows them to sort of hide more from, from their peers, especially like the middle school age group. And that's concerning to me too, because we don't want to kind of create an addiction to that, or not an addiction, but a reliance on mask-wearing and hiding. So from a social-emotional standpoint, I know that the sooner we can return to normal, as far as masks go, the better for all students and staff too. I know staff are burnt out. It's harder to teach with a mask on. However, I am also very cognizant of the low vaccine rates, and we want everybody to feel safe. So, you know, I'm, I understand completely what Dr. Moore was saying, or Sarah Moore was saying. But my main concern, I think students in general, children in general, they can bounce back and they can, a lot of them can kind of deal with this for the time being, especially the younger ones. They seem to handle it pretty well. They don't even notice when they get home, their mask is still on. I see that with my own children. But I do have serious concerns for the students who have more emotional struggles. Students on the spectrum who have trouble with body language and interpreting facial expressions with a mask on.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. I don't know if, oh, good, Charlene is on. If she would like to offer some thoughts, again, a person who's been on this journey with Salem Public Schools and is our Health Services Director and Director of Nursing. Charlene, would you want to offer any particular comments or considerations that you think the school committee should take into account as we weigh this issue with respect to masks of students and staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, very much. And I apologize for being off-camera, everyone. I'm getting over an illness myself. So my apologies for that. But, you know, I'm appreciating every perspective that I've heard so far, and I just think that with, you know, lifting the mask mandate, there's always going to be choice. And I think that that's something that is really important to understand for some. For some people, masks will feel right. For others, they won't. And, you know, we respect one another, right? It's not a black or white issue. It's a choice. I also think that mitigation strategies are so important. You know, basic public health measures, hand washing, staying home when sick. That means children, that means staff. We have to keep those things going, aside from masks, to keep the spread of not only COVID, but other illnesses that can, you know, sicken us. And I also think from a psychological perspective, granted, I'm not a psychologist and don't pretend to be, but I think that as a community, we have to come to terms with, when will this feel right? When will saying goodbye to masks, or at least recognizing that there can be a choice of wearing a mask or not, when will that feel safe? When will it feel comfortable? I mean, we have to think that as a world, we've all been traumatized by this pandemic and have to recognize that it's going to take tiny steps to move forward, right? Based on the data, and the data is telling us that the cases in Salem have dropped significantly, we'll always keep an eye on those numbers. I mean, that for me would be really hard to let go of, right? We have to always be cognizant that things can change, and we can change with them. You know, in terms of what's best for kids, I think time will tell. That's, you know, really for all of us, time will tell how we all made it through this, right? But I encourage just, you know, those basic public health measures not be forgotten and think that masking is the be-all and end-all. I mean, people do get COVID-19 who have been fully vaccinated and worn masks. So, you know, I think the case numbers are the most important, and we will continue to work on encouraging people to be vaccinated. And we will encourage on getting, we will encourage students to enroll in our pool testing, right? So that we can monitor that way. That's something that Salem has that so many school districts don't. Pool testing plus a take-home test at the end of the week. That's huge. So those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you, Charlene, and appreciate all the hard work you and your team are putting in on a daily basis. So it feels like to me, of school committee members, I love your feedback on other questions or comments you'd like to offer. It feels like to me, at least I'm picking up some consensus around not wanting to tie our mask policy to a date, but wanting to really think about what are the metrics that make sense for Salem. Number one. And number two, some hesitancy around lifting the policy on the 28th, or I would say going mask-optional on the 28th, given what we know about the trends we've seen sort of post-vacation, wanting to kind of let that period of time play out. And then trying to understand what are the most, if we are going to look at data and metrics as the Board of Health has, as, you know, we have as a district throughout this, what are the most important metrics we want to consider? Certainly our vaccination rates. I know the district and staff are doing everything we can to connect directly with families and share with them the opportunity for vaccinations, encourage them to talk to their medical professionals, their physicians, their children's pediatrician about the vaccine opportunities they have. But we're still seeing lower percentages than we'd like. We also know we're seeing lower case counts. So, you know, case counts, community percentages, hospitalization rates. We're also still sampling wastewater. We do have a number of metrics along with pool testing that we could sort of try and ask our district to pull together to give us that consideration for what we want, what we may want to be looking at. At this point, I definitely want to open it up to committee members to get a sense of issues that are on your mind, and if maybe we could think about framing this on importance of metrics to you. Is there a date or a timeline that you're thinking about? And anything specific that you want to make sure we're requesting the superintendent and the team to go back and take a look at? Dr. Pangala, also someone who has been part of this effort. Thank you so much, Dr. Pangala, for the time, attention, and that you've given to this issue and the guidance along the way. Much appreciated.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I just wanted to find out if we were going to be sharing the vaccine data. We've talked a lot about it, but just perhaps it would be helpful for anyone watching to know exactly what that vaccine data looks like, as well as our data on case counts. You know, or at least perhaps where we can, where families can find that information. I think that's important. I also, I think it's a little, you know, when I'm sorting, the thing I was scribbling down as I was comparing like this metric, you know, how many cases per day versus how many cases per week, you know, in Salem versus per 100,000 people, and, you know, it gets messy fast. So it is a little complex. So, you know, I think that that's going to be part of the discussion. So I just wanted to maybe have a chance for us to see that data, if we can share it.
If there's a slide that we have, we can certainly show it. I mean,
Or just the email, perhaps, that we recently
We can share.
This is the vaccination rate by school. In blue is December, and in orange is yesterday. We did have a clinic today, so we will see at least one of our schools get a slight uptick. And I don't remember, forgive me, these are messy slides, but
I can do the overall, Chelsea, the overall percentages it looked like for vaccination rates. For the K through five group was 48% vaccinated. For six through eighth group, it's 65% vaccinated. And for the ninth through 12th group, it's 65% vaccinated. And obviously, we want to see those numbers continue to increase. And we do have some schools, the K through five at 48 has some schools that are in the 30s, and some of our schools that are in the 60s. So just to keep that in mind.
We also received the data broken down by racial ethnicity demographics. So our Caucasian or our white students were 70% vaccinated. Our Asian students are 71% vaccinated. Our African-American students are 52% vaccinated. And our Hispanic-Latino students are 43% vaccinated. How that translates to actual numbers is, so for our kids who are unvaccinated, we have twice, approximately twice as many Hispanic-Latino kids, about 900 who are unvaccinated versus about 475 white students who are unvaccinated. So I think that that is really important to consider as well, given what we know about how this pandemic has disproportionately impacted different groups.
Thank you, Dr. Pangala. Important points. I saw Manny's hand, and then I'll get to you, Mary. Mr. Cruz, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. And just want to thank the folks that have joined us all today, their perspective, and certainly my colleague, Dr. Pangala, for all of her efforts and, I think, highlighting the disparities in the vaccination rates. Really important to understand the challenges that we still have with respect to ensuring that our kids, especially those that are in communities that have been disproportionately harmed by the pandemic, are as safe as possible when they're coming to school. I think the things that I think about as we're having this discussion is back to Dr. Campbell's point regarding what this state mandate getting rescinded means. Mask optional certainly is one of the communications. But then the other is, it didn't rescind what we already had in place with respect to mitigation, our policy with respect to masking, which we set back in August. It didn't have an end date. So to be clear, right? I think the governor's order here doesn't necessarily mean that our mask mandate has to go away. So I just want everybody to be clear. If we don't have a resolution by this on the 28th, our default is the policy we voted back in August, which was to have the masking in place and to remain in effect. And so when I think about like the data points that I certainly want to see move before I get comfortable with the thought of masks being optional. The vaccination rates certainly top of mind, along with the case counts. So double-clicking the emphasis there, you know, looking at the Bentley numbers and then looking at the demographic data, it's really alarming. And again, it speaks to that vaccine hesitancy amongst certain communities. So I know that the staff are doing all that they can to try to raise the numbers there. But again, my concern is, you know, it's a really scary number to see only 34% of students are vaccinated. And then I think about where we're at with our kiddos that are under five, right? Who are still waiting for a vaccine. And so, you know, I think that there's a couple of factors that I want to keep my eye on. I know, Dr. Pangala, you've been great about keeping us posted with respect to kind of the timelines with the FDA. But, you know, I do want to monitor that window with respect to kids under five receiving a vaccination as well. That's something that I think is a really important factor, just given the fact that we have students who have siblings who remain unvaccinated despite the fact that they're vaccinated, but not by choice, but simply because we're just not there yet with respect to authorization.
Thank you, Manny. Ms. Manning, and then Dr. Pangala.
Yeah, I would let Kristen go if she was going to respond to Manny.
Just to add to Manny's point that we have three schools with kids who are not yet eligible for vaccination, and we don't know when those vaccines will come through, which makes that a challenging thing to think about when it comes to timetables. Oops, wrong one.
Thanks, Dr. Pangala. Ms. Manning?
Yeah, a couple of questions that I would look to have answered, you know, before taking a vote on this. And then just one observation, well, two observations. One is that a minute ago, when we said we were going to put the slides on for folks that are watching to be able to see the numbers, I mean, they were on for like an eighth of a second. You know, if I was somebody looking at that for the first time, I probably would have gotten to, you know, the first three schools that are in. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can put those on longer or something. But besides that, one observation just is that the results from the survey on the families and the staff and the students, I just want to bring up the family results for a minute because if we total the families who responded, they didn't, they did not want, you know, blanket, no, they didn't want this mask mandate stopped. And then the ones who want to wait for at least a few more weeks. If you add those together versus the people who just want to take the masks off now, they're within seven. You know, I mean, that's a very close, and I think that's sort of indicative of how, you know, big the split is on this. Two things I'd look for an answer for. First of all, and this goes back to the metrics. And I remember when this all started, and we were, as school departments all over the state, looking for some metrics, some guidance to make some decisions. And we were like, why isn't the governor giving us a number? Why isn't Riley giving us the number? Why aren't they giving us a number? We need a number. And I don't even remember exactly what the numbers were for. I just know we were, you know, in this big state of tell us exactly what to do, and we'll do it. And I think if we do decide to, you know, lift the mandate, then I would, I would be more comfortable looking at that if we had established ahead of time, not that we're going to check in every two weeks and, you know, make this decision again or whatever. Because I don't want to say if we're going to, if we're going to not have a mandate for masks, then it's always going to be hanging over folks' heads that we're going to change it quickly. But I would like some kind of a guidance, and this is when we would have, I think, just design our own. That if, you know, God forbid, numbers changed and these things happened, then we would, that would be our guideline. We'd have to relook at this right away again. And I'm just, the folks that know the numbers and know how to do that, you know, I'm looking for some help there, because I certainly would not want to take that. My other question is, if we lift a mandate and students are not required to have a mask on at school, except if they're either coming back from a quarantine or what, you know, if there are circumstances, without listing them even, or if there are parents who clearly they were going to be who want their child to wear a mask in school. How are we going to do that? Like, if I'm thinking I'm a teacher, you know, and I got, you know, 23 kids in front of me, and how am I going to know every day, like, the six or seven or 20 out of the 23 that their mother or father or guardian wants them to have that mask on and keep the mask on the kid? I think, you know, just putting myself in that situation, that to me, I think, is going to be tough. And so I think we really need to hear from, somehow, from people who are actually in school and know how that would play out, rather than, you know, because I don't know, I don't really know how I would do that. And I'm wondering how we would expect people to be able to do that. So that's something I'd want to go in so far before looking to make some changes to. And then since I'm thrown in what I'm thinking, I'm absolutely thinking we don't do this immediately that we, because I am concerned about that vacation spike thing. And February vacation, we're going to be, you know, it's still winter. Maybe April vacation, I wouldn't be thinking there'll be a spike. People are going to be outside, you know, it's going to be a lot, you know, less restrictive in February. You're looking for something to do. You march into the museum. You do, you know, you stay home and do whatever. But the weather is not going to be conducive, maybe, to be out all the time. April, I'm a little less concerned about. I'd like to get past this one.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Ms. Cornell?
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who's working so hard to keep us informed and to give us information so that we can make, you know, good decision here. A lot of what Mary said is also what I'm thinking. So I just want to throw it out there that I'm with you on that, you know, sort of, how does this affect the teachers in the classroom if they're supposed to be monitoring who is and isn't wearing a mask? Early on in the pandemic, at Wentworth Institute of Technology, we had a thing where we were supposed to check the kids' testing status every day. And I have to be honest, I forgot all the time, you know, it was just, it's a lot to do that. So I do wonder how that's going to work. I am really concerned about the vax rates at some of the elementary schools. So if we're talking about metrics, right, the state was telling us 80% vax rate at school, you can opt out of masks, and we don't have anybody at 70%. Particularly that Bentley number is concerning to me, given that. And I think Bentley has a higher percentage of low-income and students of color in it than some of our other schools. So that concerns me, getting that number up. But I also, and this is the piece that, you know, Mary, it's exactly what I'm thinking of. It's like, okay, if the positivity rate in town is pretty low, but our, and our vax rates are low, like, where is that tipping point? Where the positivity rate is high, gets to a point, and, you know, let's say our vax rate stays stagnant. Hopefully, they won't. But I think they certainly could, given all the work everybody's done so far. How much more are we really going to get? You know, how do we identify what that number is? You know, if the positivity rate in Salem is 5%, but we've got kids at Bentley, you know, more than half of them are unvaccinated. Is that, should we, right, take the masks off those students? Maybe it's different if we're looking at the high school, which has higher vaccination rates. You know, not every school is in the same situation here. So that's a piece that, like, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't understand. I don't know how we land on a metrics for that when the schools are in very different places. Put aside the fact that I completely understand that young kids, by and large, do not, you know, pass, contract, and, you know, suffer as greatly from the virus as, you know, somebody like me. So, you know, this is, this is the piece where it's like so much information is swirling around. I do have one really specific question, which goes back to, I think, Dr. Campbell's point about mask optional, which is like, what's the efficacy of one-way masking? Because I think about, you know, those are kids who are really at high risk. And I understand telling those parents, okay, you know, we've got mask optional. We understand that your kiddo's got a mask on. Let's say there's some clear plan for teachers to sort of assist kids in keeping their masks on. Is one-way masking actually protecting that kid? I, you know, so hopefully, Kristen, your hand is up, so hopefully you can help me on that. That piece did not, there was nothing that I was looking at that made that made me feel great about that. So that, I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Beth Ann. Dr. Pangalo?
Yeah, so I'll answer to the best of my ability Beth Ann's question. So one-way masking is not as effective as universal masking, because universal masking is acting as source control, right? So it's, it's essentially helping to keep the air clean, so keeping the virus out of the air. However, one-way masking and to Dr. Moore's point, if you have high-quality masks, one-way masking can be pretty effective. I think it's probably more effective for adults wearing the N ninety fives. KN ninety fives are really good for kids, but they're not as snug. If anyone's worn an N ninety five versus a KN ninety five, it's like sitting on, the KN ninety five sits on your face nicely, but the N ninety five is like pulled to your face. So I don't think that that's going to be as protective. But I, I've seen various percentages thrown around. I have no idea how to judge which one is correct and which one is not correct. But certainly one-way masking is not going to be as effective, but it will still provide some protection. That would be my best answer there. And just Dr. Moore's point, I think it's absolutely critical that when we do remove the mask mandate or the mask requirement and go mask optional, I think we, we really need to have those masks available to our students and staff. Because we don't want their ability to keep themselves safe, particularly if they are immunocompromised or living with immunocompromised family. We don't want that dependent on their ability to afford masks, right? That would be totally inequitable. So, you know, I, I guess, I, I also cognizant of time, I'm, I'm very, I, I get that people are super tired of this pandemic. I'm very tired of this pandemic. I've thought a lot about this over the past few weeks and the past few months about this transition. I think this transition is really hard. It's hard for some people because they just want it done. And it's hard for others because they're really concerned. And I think that that desire for normalcy is really understandable. I also suspect that we are going to be moving into a new phase of this pandemic where we are starting to move away from some of these mitigation strategies. And we're hopeful that case counts are still going to come down. I would like to point out though, that so we're, there's a lot of talk about our lowercase counts. And if you, I don't know if it'll let me do this, but so you can see here that our case counts are lower. This is from Salem's data dashboard. And you can see that they're lower. They definitely are, because they were astronomical about a month ago. They're now much lower, but they're still pretty high. They're comparable to where we were in November and to where we were last January. The other thing I'd like to point out about these numbers is that they're almost certainly an undercount because thankfully now we have rapid tests. And so it's definitely not a full picture unless, it never was, but it's even less of a full picture now. If you translate this number of one hundred-ish on this scale, the weekly new Salem cases, this translates, let me get the right piece of paper, to three hundred and thirty cases per one hundred thousand people over seven days, which puts us far over that one hundred thousand, one hundred cases per one hundred thousand that the CDU sees as high transmission. So we are well over that threshold. So when we say case counts are low, they are lower, but we are still really in that area of high transmission right now. And I just want to acknowledge that. The other thing that I think is really important to talk about is that as we are moving into this next phase, where hopefully case counts will come down and we are fully expecting that. We have to remember that there can be more waves and variants. So that is inevitable. It's going to happen because that's what viruses do. They evolve. So I think this, this discussion about what our metrics are is really important. And a year and a half ago, I think we've got a little bit gun shy around metrics because like they changed and then they changed again, and it was really difficult. We're now almost two years in and we have a lot more data and there's a lot more. There's, there's actually just a study that came out, getting Beth Ann to your point, I can share this with everyone. But a modeling study coming out, looking at how do you, how do you balance that and how can you, where do you start to set those thresholds? I haven't read it yet. It came out yesterday. So I think that we could get some good metrics there. And I think what we're really trying to do is figure out what our goals are. And I think we really want to be goal-driven. And I know that equity has been a big part of all of our work. And I, I think that that's going to drive our decisions. And so I just want to really call that out. That we need to make sure that those who need the most get the most. And in this case, that might look a little bit different than some of the conversations around equity we've had before. But I think we really want to be cognizant of that. And I think I'll stop there, but I have lots of thoughts, so.
Thank you, Dr. Pangalo. I do want to be mindful of time. I have asked Mr. Cruz if I, I do have a hard stop at seven, if I need to leave, if he can bring this home. But I do, our goal for this evening is to try and understand what data points are important. We, our next meeting is the twenty eighth. I think there's consensus that we're not tied to a date. We, we really have valued the way we've approached this pandemic, both as a city and as a school district, which is like, what are the metrics that we're going to be looking at? Why are they important? And how do we put those in place in such a way that is reasonable? We're never going to be able to satisfy every risk, nor do we want to be in a position where we're putting in place a layered approach that doesn't work for a long period of time. And I, I think it's trying to understand what are the key issues in metrics we want to look at? Because God forbid, if cases start to go back the other direction and we need to go back to masks, we, we're going to want to know what we're tying that to and not just toggling between dates and how people are feeling. So I'm going to call on Amanda, because I know Ms. Campbell hasn't offered any commentary at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said here, but I do, I'm thinking about a couple of specific things. The first, I think we're really obviously going to have to grapple with what types of metrics we're looking at. And to your point, Mayor, because it goes the other way to that as new variants come, what we don't want to have is something that doesn't work for the future. Because we've made it maybe a little too rapidly or too hastily. The second piece that I'm thinking about is how expansive or specific do we want that policy? Like, how fine do we want it to be applied? So for example, are we comfortable with it in terms of a K to eight and a nine to twelve? Do we want a middle band of six to eight, except for salt and salt, so that they're not split? Are we comfortable going school by school? You know, because once we apply the metrics, do we apply them to each individual school as they stand as a whole? I think that's something where I, I think you can make an argument for a couple of different ways. The third thing I'm thinking about is being cognizant particularly of our youngest learners. That yes, in some of our schools, they have a split status in terms of access to vaccines and not access to vaccines. But also that many of those students are much more likely to have younger siblings in the home. You know, if you're a second grader, you probably have at least one, maybe a few younger siblings who also don't have access. I think that's really important to consider. And the last piece just around, I think that was such an important point that both Dr. Moore and Dr. Pangalo brought up again, was in a universal masking versus one-way masking. The access to high-quality masks, but also how well are they fitting our, our littlest learner's faces? And so on that point specifically, I'd love for either Chelsea or Charlene to weigh in in terms of have we experienced, or I guess the parents who are here to have for our, for our tiniest littlest faces. I know that I've had a hard time finding and making sure that they're fitting appropriately and properly and consistently. So, you know, like what is working before their faces are changing, they're growing. Families are trying to figure out how do we make sure that the masks are continuing to fit as they, as their faces grow over the course of the pandemic, unfortunately. So I'd love to hear if we've had success with that or if we're still tweaking it and if there's availability for the right-sized fit. If we're, you know, it's, it's different if you're trying to find a certain fit for universal masking. It's a whole different ballgame if you're trying to find the right-sized fit for one-way masking.
Thank you for that, Ms. Campbell. I don't know if we're going to have, be able to have all those answers today, but I think I want to make sure we're planting them so that as we think about our, our next meeting is the twenty eighth. My expectation is that we will not be taking this matter up again until the twenty eighth and that the current masking policy will remain in place until we do take something up. Obviously, that'll be the day of the twenty eighth. And my hope is that this meeting, we can give some direction to staff and the team that has been with us throughout this pandemic, some of whom are district employees, some of whom, who are physicians and others who have been part of the effort of helping us with this layered approach to mitigation, can provide a recommendation back to us or guidance based on some of the conversation we're hearing today. What are those metrics, the questions that you just raised, Ms. Campbell, some that others have raised as well, to put us in a position to make some informed decisions on the twenty eighth, recognizing that we know our, there is a constituency that wants to hear from us on this issue and wants to understand what we're doing. Mr. Fleming, you haven't commented yet. So Ms. Cornell, if you don't mind, I did see your hand earlier, but we haven't heard from Jim, so I'd like to be able to recognize him. You're on mute, Jim, just so you know.
Just a few comments. And I, I'd like to adopt a little Amanda Campbell's thoughts. Would a policy have to be universal? Or could we differentiate in terms of age, in terms of school, in terms of past history, et cetera? That's number one. Two, number two, I would also like to involve at least the opinion of the unions, not only the teachers union, but the custodian union relative to their thoughts. And, and number three, I think, I, I think we should have a clearer vision of where the parents are. I think Ms. Manning interpreted it as only a seven percent differentiation. I think it's a little more. And I think we have to either expand that survey or analyze the data in that survey. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Ms. Cornell?
Yeah, I just had a question. I think this is probably for Dr. Strike. So I think the date that I think the, like athletics is the twenty eighth and we meet the twenty eighth, or I'm sorry, let me just say this again. The mask mandate is dropped the twenty eighth. And we meet that day. So I'm wondering about your thoughts about athletics that day? Because I was reading that the MIA says it's on, it's a responsibility of the school district to communicate to other districts what their, you know, what the deal is. So is it, are we just going to assume that for athletics, we're just status quo? So if we have a home game, kids are going to be masked up?
We have a mask mandate and, and until the school committee chooses whatever point to eliminate it, that would apply to all activities, you know, including athletics. That's how I read it.
So I guess this is then another question is, do our students have any away games that day? And do we then say that our students are masked away?
Yeah, I gotta have to, I don't know that we have, I doubt we have a game that day. Because it's the first day back from vacation, but I will look into your question about away games and how that works. I know for home games, I, I've read it as you just stated, but I will look into that question. I, I, can I just also add, Mayor, that we did put up the two slides that Ms. Manning referenced earlier on the website. If you go to COVID nineteen and click on it, you'll see the data. We're going to also add additional data by tomorrow morning so that people can see. But the two slides we showed tonight are now up on our website under COVID nineteen.
So I guess what I'm hearing from, from the majority of our school committee members is a desire to really be thoughtful around how we're looking at this issue, wanting to have some metrics that we're, we want to tie our decision-making to with respect to this. Wanting to understand a little bit more of the efficacy around one-way masking and, and some of the equity issues that were raised. And better understanding what the school district staff can sort of point to with respect to variants of, of these metrics. It could look different in different schools. Is that something that we'd want to consider? Are there other thoughts that people have before we wrap things up today? Recognizing that this is meant to be the beginning of the conversation and hopefully give some direction to the staff to help us land in a place like we have throughout this whole district, that I, I think just about every single one of our decisions has been fairly unanimous and led by help from both within and external to the district aimed at keeping our schools open and keeping students and staff safe and healthy.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the people who've been reaching out to us. I think the communications we've received thus far have been really thoughtful and constructive. So I just wanted to extend that appreciation. And yeah, so I, and I agree, Mayor, that I think that this is going to be, and deserves to be a substantial conversation. And I'm glad that, glad that that continues to be how our body is operating.
So I think we've given some good marching orders to staff in terms of some of the metrics we'd like to see. You know, trying to land in a place that's respectful of our overall equity goals and also recognizing that we don't expect to be wearing masks forever. And that certainly is our hope, but wanting to not tie our decision to a date on a calendar, but really to what might be happening on the ground here. Which, good news, like a lot of things are heading in the right direction, including vaccination rates within our schools. If there's nothing else on this, you know, Mr. Cruz, I'm going to turn it over to you so I can jump, so you can close this out on this meeting. And if there's anything else that you wanted to add.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, perfect. Motion made by Mr. Cruz that we adjourn, a, a second by Mr. Fleming. All those in favor, Dr. Pangalo?
Yes.
Ms. Manning? This is to adjourn?
Sorry, muted, yes.
Ms. Cornell?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Driscoll, yes. Seven members voting, seven in the affirmative. We stand adjourned. Dr. Strike, I think you've got the framework of the conversation along with Chelsea and the team and hopefully can do some additional due diligence between now and the twenty eighth. So we can, we can have a more informed conversation at that time. Okay, great. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.